Okay, good evening everyone. We'll call the meeting to order, sorry about the late start tonight. Let's all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for roll call we'll just note that we have everyone here tonight. And I'd like to announce that we did have an executive session prior to the meeting tonight at 7:00 PM to discuss potential litigation. And we will also have another executive session immediately following the meeting tonight to discuss personnel. I don't have any forms for public comment at this time, but I'll just check as always, does anybody wish to make public comment? Okay, move into the approval of minutes. I'll motion to approve items 4.1 and 4.2. That would be the board action minutes for the meetings on January 9th and January 23rd of 2018. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I move that we accept the high school accounts, middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of $4,829,604.40 for January 2018 as presented.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I move that we approve the treasurer's report for January 2018 as presented and file it for audit.
Motion and a second for the filing of the treasurer's report. Any questions or comments on this one? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. I'd like to move on to the report of the superintendent. I'd like to turn it over to our student board reps for their monthly update.
First for the high school, winter sports are coming to a close. Both boys and girls, basketball are heading for districts, as well as a few wrestling players and winter track participants. DECA state competition is coming up next week, and our students are looking forward to impress. And students are getting ready for a break at the end of the week. For the middle school, the PMEA District 11 String Fest is coming up on February 23rd.
Okay, and I have a report out from a meeting that we did a week or two ago, I think. Week or two? Yeah, sounds right. From West. And then after this, I'm going to tell you our plans for the future. So some of the positives, as always, teachers, they are every single school, all the time, that's always it. Good classes, good atmosphere, and friends. Areas for improvement, kids always want to see longer recess in every single elementary school, that's always a thing. Longer gym, longer art, longer lunch, more toys, swim club, hockey, more music, sign language, more arts and crafts opportunities, and more soccer and dodgeball. So, nothing that shocks anyone there. What do you dream Pots Grove can become? A school with a bigger gym, a school with a pool, a school with a bigger playground, more substitutes, gardens, and class presidents. How can you make West a better place? Be kind, help others, don't talk over people. I think everyone needs to learn that one, really. Be more respectful, include everyone, help cheer people up, no yelling, and clean up after yourself. So basically, what we've done is, I mean, I've come to you with, I believe, almost every school, and gone through each report. So what we're going to do over the next couple of weeks is create like an action plan for each school. And then I'm going to send it out to, I'm going to try to talk about it with Mr. Doc, sorry, words, Dr. Ziegler, Mr. D'Renzo, and the principals from the other schools, and see what we can do to make Pots Grove a better place overall.
Like to move into Section 9, discussion items now, with our board. Tonight, I'm proposing three new job descriptions within our teaching ranks, as well as our administrative ranks. I say to the board tonight that I do this as part of my transition in the last 18 months to areas of need that we've had. It's given me an opportunity to look at different components and how we do business in the district. And it's, these decisions have been really, the whole thought process has taken over real, a year to get here. I've had an opportunity to share, you know, with the board and Personnel Committee and some board members individually regarding some of my thoughts on these new and revised positions. The position, there's three positions, Director of Community Relations and Co-Curricular Programs, a High School Assistant Principal for Athletics and Activities, that would be a dual role position there, as well as an Instructional Support Specialist, and then a Revised Secretary to the High School Assistant Principal for Athletics. In your board packets, we have given you job descriptions of each. And if I may, I would like to start with the Instructional Support Team Specialist. One of the things that we've have taken the time to do this past year, we've had four instructional coaches. Due to a personnel change and due to one of our coaches leaving, it created opportunities for us to have more discussion on how we could find solutions to have dialogue with our specific students and teachers of special need. And we wanted to create a problem-solving environment, you know, within our ranks, within our most kids who, most kids in need. Our support team, we want to facilitate and be collaborative and provide teachers with support. I think the biggest thing for us is that it's hard for a classroom teacher to, during the course of planning process, to plan for the needs of all their children. And especially in the K-5 group, these people that we're proposing to fill these positions would be teachers that have experience in our elementary schools, who have experience supporting teachers with classroom interventions and high-quality instruction to help our, help our teachers, as well as our students achieve. And ultimately, the goal would to be, obviously, to keep students out of special education, and help them, give them the supports and interventions that they need prior to going into that piece. This, approximately, we have over 600 students with IEPs in our district, and we continue to work to lower that, but we also want to continue to work with those kids and best support them along the way. So this person would report to the Director of People's Services and the Director of Education and Assessment, and we would constantly look to dialogue with them and to make sure that we have the supports in place in our K-5 group with that particular piece. Any questions regarding that else? If I can stop and, or just go through the whole presentation.
Just show us the estimated cost?
The estimated cost, and I'll share this with you, it's for this whole program, really, Mr. Leach, is budget neutral or less for all these positions. Due to the people leaving, we feel that we can put people, appropriate candidates in positions, and save money at all levels. So we're looking at, really, at the end of the day, we'll move more experienced teachers into this position and hire at beginning salaries. And the money that we saved from the instructional coach leaving at the top of the salary, and an instructional coach at the middle of the salary, we feel that will take care of the salaries for the community, I'm sorry, Director of Community Relations and Co-Curricular, as well as the High School Assistant and Director of Athletics.
Just a comment, I'm experienced with the IST system and support it 100%, and very thankful that you're bringing it to Pots Grove. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. And obviously, it's, and Mr. Parker, you know this, these decisions were not made in isolation. I know that, you know, Ms. Pacino and Mr. Vorus and their teams, along with our technology group, and a lot of the administrators along the way, and, you know, Dr. Hardy jumped in here when he got involved with his experience with elementary side of these proposals. We had a lot of local experts, if you will, that really helped make this decision. I think it's money well-spent for our kids and for our teachers and that support. Moving on to the High School Assistant Principal and Director of Athletics, when we thought of this particular position, there are several high schools in the area that do have these positions, we understand that it is a huge undertaking. We know that it's not a less position, it's a more position for the successful candidate. What we hope to do is to maintain the supports for the high school as far as building aid and the extra support that we give them through security support as well. I don't look at lowering any of those current positions to help support the high school climate as far as that goes. But I do ask to support the Assistant Principal/Director of Athletics and Activities with more secretarial help. Currently, it's 10 hours, I would like to bump that up to 20, and that's one of the reasons why we have the revised job description. We feel that there's work that can be done in tandem with the Assistant Principal for Athletics and Activities that will help make that job, you know, better, more supportive to that person, as well as the athletic and administrative, you know, the administrative team at the high school. Any questions or comments there?
I guess, not a question yet, but once you go through the next position, if you could just explain how the two tie together, and what it means as far as changes from how we operate today to how we're going to operate if this is all approved.
Right. To start with the job description now, with the Director of Community Relations and Co-Curricular. Currently, the Director of Athletics also does co-curricular. So we're taking the co-curricular piece off the Director of Athletics, even though there's a lot of, there'll be a lot of overlap, but the person directly responsible would be the Director of Community Relations and Co-Curricular Activities. Again, my thought on this is that it'll free up some time for the administrative job that this person needs to do, as well as the athletic job as well. And that piece will help out on that administrative side of the High School Assistant Principal and Director of Athletics and Activities. The primary focus for me in my time that I've been here in this seat is that, well, we don't do a very good job when it comes to public relations management. And I say that, it's not social media, it's being out in the public. It's not putting this out there on Facebook or tweeting information, it's making contacts with our community and having face-to-face contact to really bridge the gaps that we need. We need alumni relations. Yes, we have a big, yes, we have email. We do some of this, we dabble in a lot of things here, but we need someone to oversee this piece. Funds development, I had an opportunity to interview with the Chamber of Commerce yesterday for a board position. I say that because they're ready to help us create opportunities for the Pots Grove School District. And I think that person, along with the staff that we have, in particular areas of expertise, we can take those people with us. We can take our business office with us when there's financial concerns in the community. We can take our People's Services Department with us when we have concerns about our children in our community. We can take our tech department to places to help integrate technology throughout our community and show the things that we're doing. So there's a lot of things that will tie in together with this particular piece. Marketing piece, I think, one of the things that I've stressed to you as a board and my group, is that I want to be able to get all the good things that are inside the Pots Grove School District outside. And we need someone to monitor those things. You've heard me say this too, we want to be a district of choice, not second choice. We have all the bright things to do in place, we have the academic components, we have the supports in place, we have co-curricular drama, we have it all. We just want to, we want to sell ourselves to our community and abroad, and I think this is a person and this position will help us do that. The marketing and recruitment management, research and planning, and the Pots Grove Education Foundation, it's just, for me, in the last 18 months, it's been hanging out there. That needs to be revitalized. We need to do and exercise the purpose of that organization is to fundraise and give mini-grants back to our teachers, families, and community, whatever that specific to be. So we really need to continue that. And then the final thing would be the district co-curricular management piece, where that 's our clubs. And one of the things I'm going to ask this year during budget season is a 25,000 increase for co-curricular activities, to keep students here after school, to engage them in activities that interest them, so when they come to school the next day, they're excited about being here, they see their teacher in a different light. And I think that it'll definitely be money well-spent as far as that piece goes. So, there are the seven, you know, principal areas with this particular position. This co-curricular position would join the athletic and co-curricular, if you will. So the Athletic Director, Assistant Principal and Athletic Director would be on that committee, the co-curricular person would be on that committee. The Community Relations piece, at this time, I look at this person broadly, not sure where they really belong, but they would be a liaison, so for all the committees. So if we were looking at something with board policy that affected Community Relations, they'd jump on policy. If it was something with curriculum and technology integration that we're going to do within our drama program, they would, they'd jump there. If it was something that dealt specifically with technology, they would jump into that particular piece, facilities and operations, you know, maybe we want to work on our branding and have flags at all our schools, and we'd work on what it would take to implement a more, you know, vibrant campus, if you will, across the Pots Grove School District. So I look at that person as having a niche in all areas, and really would fit in where needed as far as those specific areas of committee oversight would be concerned. And as we grow, I mean, there are some short-term goals that we will have, like in the next, my goal would be to have a transition period this spring with the Assistant Principal and AD spot, transition is Community Relations and Co-Curricular spot this spring. This would all go into effect July 1st, and we'd have plenty of time for transition, and then have some short-term goals for that first six months, and we would share them with the board, obviously, and then look to how that would fit into superintendent's goals as we move into the 18, 19 school year. So this is all done with people in-house, and I honestly, I say this to you all, and I say to people in our audience, if I didn't think we had the people in-house to do it, I wouldn't be talking about this, I would have thought of another way to get this done. But we do have people that have the skill set and areas of expertise that can help lead these positions, fill the gaps, and make us a better organization. And I feel strongly about that with the people that we have that could do this. Again, it's budget neutral or less. I really feel it's going to be less, because the money that we have and the money that we'll use to hire new teachers to support the IST process, that'll be a substantial savings, and then use the current money to support the other two positions. So, any questions regarding the three positions, secretarial, etc.?
So budget neutral or less at this point, but how about in the future? Are they going to be, are you going to be seeking budgets for these departments, or how's that cover?
Good question, Mr. Parker. I have some, part of the super, and Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but under the auspice of the superintendent's office, we do have some Community Relations fund, if you will, to use, you know, for that type of outreach. And I'd really like to use, share that money, if you will, to help get this off the ground with no budget impact with that particular piece, and really give this person opportunity to sort of see, you know, talk to what the needs would be, what the vision would be, and within this first six months, you know, to a year, use the shared budget in the office of the superintendent, as well as possibly even Market Street, if we find a need that we really all want to invest in, we could use that. And then start next year in budget season, when we start, to formulate a budget for the next school year. I think we can, I think we can get it off the ground with the funds we already have.
So, the statement of budget neutral or less is for salaries?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, but they're, short-term, we think we can cover the short-term initiatives with what we have as well going forward, and I guess we're going to have to consider going forward. I know you just said that we were going to look to increase the budget for co-curricular by 25,000, just to get more kids after school. I know it's at the younger grade levels, because we talked about this so much over the past year, but I guess I just wanted to make sure that I was clear, we were clear, that the budget neutral or less is just for the salaries.
That is correct. And one of the things that, and with Dave's buzzer presentation tonight, that money was incorporated into that, and I really, that was more, that particular money was on the co-curricular side, the activities, the athletics side that we have currently, is that correct, Dave? Did you put it on that side? Okay, just want to make sure. So that was already incorporated on that side? And you are correct about the salaries.
In the salaries that are the budget neutral and such, is there a secretarial position? It sounds like he has a very broad area you're talking about, he's going to be a jack-of-all-trades, handling all different areas.
No, not at... Sorry, not at this time. I want to be able to grow this, and there are, I think that we can support this position, you know, via DO staff, or high school staff, or other, you know, other means. I'm not, I don't think it's, at this point, I don't want to, I don't want to, if that's a need for next year, then we'll present that to the board. But at this time, what I'd like to do is just start and grow the position, and work within a system that we already have, work with the support staff we have at the district office, and then grow from there.
Well, my question I had is, after this is all done, and approved and such like that, I understand you have the goal and the vision and such like that, will the board see that type of vision or something laid out come September-ish?
Yes, and I think if you take a look at the job description, it really, and it really defines like the public relations piece, it takes the seven principles and breaks it down. And what we will do is, we will take each area, each principal area, and concentrate on one or two, and then bring that back as an area of focus for that particular time period, and go from there. You know, we'll start it, I mean, I'm not saying we're going to start small, because there's some things I'd like to see us do, like right out of the gate, that we've been waiting to do, we just needed the right person at the right spot at the right time. But I think that, you know, one of the things right out of the gate is going to be the Education Foundation. That'll be the top of those goals. Alumni relations will be another one. Like, there's things like that, and some of the community things that we want to do with realtors in the area, like those are things right out of the gate, have a workshop for them, and show the things we're doing, and some marketing things. So I just, there you go, I just sort of verbally gave you some of my thoughts.
I know Al had asked before about would this person be part of the Athletics Co-Curriculum, or, yeah, Co-Curriculum Committee, and I understand what you're saying is that the person would sort of sit him on every committee whenever we're dealing with anything that deals with public relations and such. Is there going to be, would be part of the superintendent reports, or when we get feedback, or will that person be reporting each board meeting or once a month? I mean, just so we know what's, you know, what initiatives are being taken or brought out, just so we can be kept up to speed.
It would be under the, the support of, via the report of the superintendent at this point. I think that's a fair spot. And keep in mind that the transition piece is really, as we ask for board approval next time, would be, you know, March, April, May, you know, I mean, we'll update, there's transition there until it officially, you know, becomes effective July 1st. But we would, I would keep you updated on the transition piece.
So this is for next year?
This is for next year, correct.
Well, I like to say, I could see your excitement, I can feel the positive energy here, and you've got the great staff to do this, and I am very excited for this. So, and I like the fact that you think outside the box, a lot of times we just become stale, we just keep going and going, and you have to freshen it up and turn it around, see what current needs. So I feel your excitement.
I just wanted to kind of put one other thing out there as a positive coming out of this. So, yes, I would say this has been Dr. Shirk's brainchild, this whole little bit of a restructuring, and it's a big step for us. But back to the beginning, when we first talked to Dr. Shirk about what his vision would be, what his goals would, he would want to have as superintendent, this whole district of choice thing has been an underlying theme. How do we make Pots Grove a district of choice, and people want to be here? Everybody within the school knows all the great things about the school, but maybe not the rest of the community. We have a lot of taxpayers who don't have kids in the school, and there's a lot of people outside looking to move to someplace new and better, and we want Pots Grove to be that place. And this is part of that. But also, a little ways back, we sent out a survey, basically a customer satisfaction survey, and one of the, some of the biggest feedback we got was, we need to improve communication, we need to improve community relations, people in the community need to know better what's going on in the school district, and this, that was also a piece of this, a big piece of the input that went into this. So I just, I wanted to point out, you know, when you, I said this before the survey happened, when you send a survey and you ask people what they think, you have to take actions on the feedback, and this is one of those actions. So I think the survey was a positive thing, I hope we can continue to do that into the future, and now, you know, we can show where, there's actions being taken based on the opinions that we collected. So thank you for that as well. It was a good exercise.
Any other questions regarding? Well, I appreciate the time that you gave me to explain the method in my madness, if you will, for the, again, and I'm going to ask for approval for these positions at our February 27th meeting, it'll be an action item for all four spots. And then we'll work, you know, departmentally to get the positions filled and get the transition started for this spring. Thank you. Okay, moving on to action items and personnel.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 10-1, professional staff, 10-2- I'd like to make a motion that we approve 10-1 professional staff, 10-2 support staff, 10-3 support staff, and 10-4 support staff.
So, motion and a second to combine 10-1 through 10-4. Any questions or comments on any of these? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Moving on to supplemental appointments. We ask the board to approve the supplemental appointments as submitted.
Second.
So, you have a motion and a second for spring supplementals. Any questions or comments?
I'll be abstaining from this question.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? And one abstention? Correct. Thanks, Patty.
Moving on to action items for business. The district recommends the board to approve the 1819 Montgomery County Intermediate Membership Service Budget as presented.
I'd like to make a motion under business that we approve 11-1, the MCI membership budget, 11-2 budget transfers, 11-3 accounting software license agreement.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to combine 11-1 through 11-3. Any questions or comments? I just have one, then, Dave, would you mind just giving us an overview on the new software agreement?
Back last summer, we came to you with the potential impact of losing our software provider at the end of 2019. And we were looking at the potential of having to transfer to a new accounting software, it cost perhaps as much as $250,000. I'm happy to say that in November, December timeframe, we got clarification that our prior software provider named Jitasa had agreed to sell their software product to another partner, another Microsoft partner called, named Serenic, who wrote, actually wrote a portion of the software, but didn't have the Pennsylvania K-12 functionality in it. So, that transaction has taken place. Some of the key employees from Jitasa were hired by Serenic, so there's a continuity of information. And they seem to be dedicated to moving forward in a positive direction. What we've asked you for approval for tonight is licensing and maintenance agreements through June 30 of 19. They're still working on their pricing model, what it's gonna be, and we've provided a lot of good input into their, into their thought process. We'll see what results that come out to. So, bottom line is, we may, we may well see an increase in annual licensing and maintenance fees, but it incorporates, if we do, it'll incorporate, one, unlimited support for the software, which we've never had. We've always paid on an all cart basis, which, as we gone through a recent transition, recent upgrade in the software product, we pay for the software upgrade, plus, you know, there's always some questions that have to be resolved after the upgrade is done to resolve it. So, we probably would've made out better in the last year had we been on a unlimited model. Their new process they're also proposing is that they would provide free upgrades, no more than one per year, as part of the fee. So, or built into the fee, however you want to discuss that. So, we're looking to see how it comes out for post-2000, June of 19, but we'll, we have some time to work through that process and see what their future pricing is. But what we have right now in place for this year and next year would be less than what we paid in 2016, 17 for the services. And we're hopeful that we can limit any future increases to a reasonable level from that point forward.
Okay, thanks. And I would also maybe assume that we'll have savings just in the fact that we don't have to implement a new software, get a new server, and all the other stuff that comes along with.
One of the things that they may well push for is for our software to be hosted. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. It's very commonplace in today's marketplace. I just like having all my data here. So, I have to be sold on that, but they may well push, because it makes it easier for them to affect changes to the software universally, rather than going to each individual member's file server. So, but we may be pushed in that direction, but as of right now, everything will operate in the systems that we have, and we have time to evaluate what the process will look like going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Does that unlimited support start?
Started in January.
It started in January. All right, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Moving on to action items for education. We'd like to start with the 12-1, which is the district calendar. And we ask the board to approve our 1819 Pots Grove School District Calendar as submitted.
Second, any questions or comments?
All right, so naturally, I'm gonna bring up the same thing I brought up before, but I got a little more research this time. So, every year, we probably discuss this one way or another in regards to snow days being put on at the end of the year. And of course, we have many parents and families in the district that always come back to us at this point in time, asking about graduation date, and why do we always wait? And I understand all of the arguments and the pros and the cons for it against. The only thing I'm asking for is the district to consider changing the snow days or our calendar days to incorporate 183. The reason why I'm asking for 183 is, I went back and looked at all the school districts in our area, Phoenixville, Upper Park, Springfield, O N J, Potsdown. Every one of them uses either 183, 184, or 187 days. We're the only one that does 181 days. Now, there is very easily places to buy those days, whether you can use them from, like other schools in the beginning of Thanksgiving, in the 20th and 21st, or different other spots. There's plenty of spots, just like the other schools have purchased. The same thing I would ask for, except for all of the other schools, again, they use their snow days or emergency days after those three, built into the schedule, as in, say, November 20th, November 21st. You got days like the March Easter holiday. You have days that you could put in, February 19th being President's Day is one of them. All the other schools use these days, not saying we use them all, I'm just saying that we could incorporate at least five. That's all I'm asking for. If we had five, and you look back at the studies, in a very rare occasion have we ever used more than five snow days? We've used three, we used four. One time, I think, we had like four or five years ago, where it was one of those blizzard after blizzard, where we actually used six, right? So, we haven't used more than five. If we could find a way to get five, we could almost, I'm not saying you say, this is the dead set date, we're gonna graduate on this day. But if you give this to parents, we have five days built in, we have a virtual date. It's not set in stone, nothing's set in stone. But at least we could be like everybody else. I mean, every other district in the neighborhood, all six of the districts went through, had the graduation calendar built in. So, I'm just asking the district to consider that as an option. And of course, obviously, the rest of the board.
With that being said, obviously, the nice part about it is, I've worked at Phoenixville, and I've worked at Springfield, and I've worked at Upper Park. And some of those, some of those, the situation is that, and I have some experience in central Pennsylvania, too. So, when you build snow days in, everybody has to know upfront that if you have a snow day before Christmas, then the next day is a particular President's Holiday, or Martin Luther King Day, or, so, a lot of people plan ahead to go away for President's Weekend, or they plan the spring break time. So, some of the, in central Pennsylvania, it's established into the culture of the schools. It's what, you know, that has occurred for 20-odd years. So, they know, they know that, that they don't, that particular piece. To build in more student days, that is a possibility. We'd have to look at that as far as the teachers' piece, too, you know, to that. Some school districts, and Phoenixville does this, those teachers, when they lose snow days, they have to make up the days. So, then it puts the burden back on the administration staff to come up with anywhere from six to 12 to 18 hours of flex time, because the teachers have, their contract is X amount of days. So, there's a lot, there's a lot of factors with that, that I would just want the board, I'd want the whole board to, at this point, at this point in the calendar season, I would want to have the whole board be in favor of the whole look back, if you will, to look at some of those things, because there's planning, I know, I was talking to Mrs. Bicker today, there's people waiting for our calendar to come out to plan for the next school year. And I know traditionally, one of the board members, it might've been you, Mr. Alexander, asked, when does the calendar come out? It comes out, we, for the last four years, it's been, two years in February, two years in March. It's varied for whatever reason, to get it out to the community. So, you know, there are things, you know, and again, some school districts just bite the bullet on the 180 days of school. Some school districts just say, you know what, we're gonna pay, we're not gonna get our $10,000. We talked about that last year. We're just, we're not gonna get our $10,000 subsidy. We're just gonna, we'll just, we'll say our seniors are here, their seniors are gonna go on the Friday the 7th, and that's just the date they're gonna graduate, and the rest of students, the juniors, and everybody else will finish, you know, the next week. And there's, you know, but I, there's a lot of different ways to tweak this. And, you know, our recommendation is what you see. If, you know, for that piece, Mr. Leach, I guess I would've, you know, we've been planning this for two months.
Yeah, this is the first we saw it, though. It's not like he came, we're going to plan this ahead of time.
Okay. I mean, two weeks ago, we gave it to you in an update, so, I, you know, my only thought is, if this, and I have no problem doing that, if this is, if this is something the board wants us to look closer at, to build in snow days, I would then have to, you know, look what contractual-wise, what does that look like? Dr. Harney, maybe you can help me with that?
I've been involved in calendar creation in the past, and one of the problems is, when you build in additional days and make a calendar, say, 183 and 184, 185, and you set your date of graduation, if you don't utilize those snow days, you then could theoretically end the school year three days prior to your graduation, because you only, those days are built in, assuming that it's going to snow, that amount of days. And if it doesn't, you could have, you could have your graduation two days after school has stopped, because you can't pay, you can't, our contract is X amount of days with our teaching staff. So, I mean, you could do it that way, but you have to, you may run into a situation where you have graduation several days after the last day of school, because you blocked out that time. That's just a thought, because I've gone through that before.
And again, I'm not asking for anything extravagant. I'm just looking at every other school but ours does it. So, it's not like we're reinventing the wheel. So, I'm asking if the board, you guys, the rest of you guys are the ones, I don't have any kids in the district anymore, right? So, I'm just trying to help out the community and the district as a whole. You guys are the ones that have the children in the school district. So, if I'm way off base, I'm shut up again.
Can I make a suggestion, because of the timing, that I would suggest we move forward, because instead of changing things drastically, but at the same time, this is a concern that comes up year after year, but we just wait too late, I guess, to discuss it. I'm not a big fan of committees, but considering the different factors involved, parents, teachers, administration, what about forming a committee, you know, whenever that meets, October, November, December next year, to discuss this? Include representatives, you know, parents that wanna give input, include teachers that wanna give thought, and then that'll help you guide you guys as far as how many day, you know, how you're building in snow days. How do you feel about that, Dr. Shirk?
I like your idea of moving forward with the calendar as it is tonight. I agree with you that we have mentioned this before, and that we haven't seen, you know, accommodation of our interests and change. A little disappointed with that. I guess what I would say is, go ahead with this calendar as is. Tell people right now that that June date is the date done, okay? And then we work on it for the calendar for the next year.
You're saying June date would count for graduation?
Graduation.
You then, for next year, you're no snow day builder. They're all a team.
Understood.
And you're saying, give up the $10,000? What a matter?
$10,000 for the seniors, right? Because the other kids, they come to school, they get their reimbursement for the other 11, well, 12 grades, would still continue, because those kids would stay in school. But the graduation, because to me, it's just the class, just the seniors. The reason I'm saying that is because I learned as a child that the school calendar was flexible by a couple of days. So, I didn't assume that because the calendar printed in my little handbook said it was a certain day, that that was the day I was gonna graduate. It's not a mystery that it moves around by a day or two. However, comma, certain of our seniors are making commitments to colleges, to, you know, armed services, or to other things post-graduation. So, for them, I would like to give them a certain level of certainty. June 7th, we're done. Thank you very much. You're ready. Because, think about it. And I love education, I really believe in education, but I don't believe that in the last week, or the first week of June, the last two days before graduation, for a senior, that you're gonna get meaningful education into their heads. And I can let a couple of days go for seniors at that point. I think that is the best compromise we can have for this, to keep it going, but gives us time to think of all the consequences for, you know, years in the future.
So, just to add a little to that, I agree. I think if the board feels like we want to be able to set a graduation date, I would just ask, so there's the option of, you know, 183, 184-day school year, there's the option of, if we come up against it, we pay, right? We don't get reimbursed for those days that we didn't educate, if the seniors end up only going to school 178 days. Let the administration go and find what's the best option, and come back with that suggestion. But the end point being that we set a graduation date in stone, if that's what we want to do. Because I don't know the best way, and I don't know if we know the best way sitting here tonight. But if we know that we wanna, that we wanna have the goal of setting the graduation date in stone, then we can at least set that, and then go back and figure out what's the best way to make that happen.
I'm a big proponent of effective communication. And by that, I mean, the fact is that the administration has been working on this calendar for a couple of months with a set given group of parameters, that are not very different than what we've used before. When I first got on the board, every year, we had Buck Day off, okay? That was a given. That was one of our holidays, was Buck Day. At some point, that went away, you know, and, okay, that is not an expectation anymore, all right? And so, we've changed a little bit, but that doesn't, you know, so we have some changes in what the expectations are, but I think that a lot of people do value their time off, their leisure time, their plans with their kids, and all of those sorts of things. So, I think that is a good consideration to give folks, you know, some more certainty than what we've got at the moment, to either plan 130, 183, or 185. It doesn't affect me either way, because I know that it's gonna shift, okay? But there are people that it does affect, and it affects them a lot. So, what I'm saying is, thank you for the work you've done over the past two months. We will probably approve this as is, or my suggestion is, we approve this as is for this year, with the understanding that June 7th is the date for graduation. And then we come back and we can look at, and give him new expectations for what we all agree on, and that is, three snow days, two snow days, zero snow days, or whatever, so that he's, they've got clear direction to put the calendar together next year. And we can do it with a committee, we can do it with just the board, we can do it with ever, but I, you know, I don't like coming up against a deadline and having to make a decision. But I, you know, I, I don't like coming up against a deadline and make, having to make a decision right now. I agree that, you know, your suggestion makes a lot of sense. But I, I also understand the frustration of working for two months on something and having somebody change it, you know, in my mind, at the last minute. Not necessarily what happened, but in, in my mind, that, you know, that can be how the administration feels.
And I didn't even make a motion, I just said, just to discuss.
Right. So, there's my reasonable plan that you can choose to adopt, or you can go off some crazy notion and do something else. That was a joke, it really was.
I have just a quick question. If seniors do get to the end of the year, and ends up they only had, say, we have a bunch of snow, a hundred and seventy-six days, for those kids going off to, you know, college or armed services or something, will the state penalize them and say that, eh, just wanna make sure that we're not messing with their futures by doing that? That's why I'm just, I don't know, so that's why I'm asking that, so. I would have to check. I, I don't, I don't, I don't think so, because it's happened at other places, you know, that I've been, where we've had a hundred and seventy-eight, a hundred and seventy-nine days. Uh, and, uh, the, the, uh, the rest of the school district, you know, K-11, has met, fulfilled their obligations for the hundred and eighty days, and the seniors graduated on a specific day and then, and moved on. So, a lot of times, senior plans are what's entrenched, you know, going to, uh, summer school or orientations. I mean, I think, Dr. Ziegler, our kids go to orientation sometimes during graduation rehearsal. If I, especially if it pushes into the second week.
They do.
You know, so I know there's, that, that does happen, that does happen, as it gets pushed later. Uh, and then if there's any, like, service commitments, or, uh, career-type opportunities, sometimes they start right out of the gate. And, uh, so, and again, um, I, what, when I say "we," I mean, you, you know I use "we" a lot. Dr. Harney, I wanna stop because...
Feel free.
I'm, I, I think there's also hours component, I think we have to, I think the calculations have to be done. 'Cause there is a certain point, they, they have to reach some apex, and I think, I think you end up counting hours as well as days. I don't know that cold right now, but I think we need to do a little more work around that to make sure.
Nine ninety. Nine ninety. It's nine ninety. And we're at eleven thirty-one.
I just wanna ensure that you have your thoughts.
Yeah, the hours piece, we, that's the critical mark.
Just speaking on the orientation issue. Two years ago, when we graduated very late due to the renovations, um, orientations were already going on. My son in particular had to go on a makeup day. He ended up with three night classes, because that was the day that you scheduled your classes. So he had the worst schedule you can ever imagine, especially as a freshman. And that was all because of the late graduation. So that, he'll never take another night class, ever.
Dr. Shirk, what's your opinion about, uh, Mr. Lindgren's suggestion for tonight?
I think it's, uh, I think it's something we definitely, we definitely can do. Again, it gives our, it gives our community members, uh, the opportunity to take a look at the calendar, know exactly when the graduation day. So, uh, you know, when this is released, when this is approved by, by the board, uh, we can, they can start making plan, you know, the, our whole district will start making plans, and our senior graduation would be included in that. We'd have, we'd have dates that Dr. Ziegler could use for caps and gowns, announcements, uh, the planning on the senior trip. Uh, there's a lot, it's a, it's a, it's a domino of what, what would just start to take place ahead of time, rather than the move-in target at the end of the year.
But I'm concerned, and perhaps I'm not fully understanding it, 'cause I didn't research it. If the current calendar that we're, we wanna approve tonight is a hundred and eighty days, it's a hundred and eighty-one days. So we would have one day flexible, if we set the graduation date, we would only have one date flexible.
Correct. The seniors own. Everybody else would still follow, so.
But there's question in regards to, uh, PDE's requirement with the nine ninety hours and so forth.
We're, we're way, yeah.
Is that academic hours, 'cause like lunchtime and stuff?
Yeah, I, I did the numbers just to be on the safe side. We're in the eleven hundreds, if you took ten half-days, 'cause you know you're gonna have some half-days. If you took ten snow days, it'd still be over a half.
Is that correct? Because PDE doesn't count study halls and this sort of thing, so.
You gotta bag out lunch.
You gotta bag out lunch, it's thirty minutes.
You gotta bag out the, the time in between classes.
Right.
Which is three minutes.
Which, is that what you did in your calculation?
But, again, that's not exact, 'cause you don't know how many half-days, you don't know how many act days, point eighty days. All that has to come into play.
I'm not comfortable making this decision tonight without the administration making, doing some more research. And I think in the future, we clearly need to discuss it more, not wait till the last minute.
On the part of the discussion in the last minute part, I wrote this up every year.
No, that, I agree with you.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Just real quick, um, can, is there any way we can address this year's graduation date? I know it's, again, we're late, but we've got people asking and asking, and honestly, I'm, I'm one of those. Last I heard was June eighth. Okay? I'm fine with that, that's my birthday. That's a great birthday present. But, um, I, I just didn't know if there was any kind of, I know we're still in February, and we could get walloped with some spring storm and, but...
We could all, again, we could also look, if that's, if that's the wishes of the board, we could also look at setting that date too. Just set it for, you know, but. If I may, just, just to address the, the board. You know, the, part of the process, we, when, when we run a school district, there are things that are, there are things that are in timely fashions. Okay? There's budget, we're in budget season. Uh, we were in capital season, we're in curriculum season. We got a lot of seasons going on. We don't have buck season, but we got seasons. So, you know, I would be the last one to say I didn't hear it, uh, concerns about the calendar. But I always heard it from one or two. I never heard it, so if this is, if this is something that's that important to the board, then I need, I need to hear about it, because this is just part of what we do as far as managing the district. This is what you hired me to do. So I'm gonna continue to manage it. If it's, if it's some, if five people have a concern about it, by all means. I think, I think for the last eighteen months, anytime there's been a concern, we've addressed it. Uh, we've been transparent with it, uh, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at it. So that we can make the best decision for our kids. It's not about Bill Shirk's schedule, uh, it's not about any, any administrator's schedule. It's about what's best for our kids and our families and our community. So if this is, if this is a reflection, if this calendar is a reflection of our community, that our community's saying, this isn't getting it, it's not working, um, then, then by all means, we wanna address it. But I haven't heard those pieces. So I, I can't honestly say to you that, that we've gotten, our, our building administrators have gotten calls, it's a concern at PTAs, uh, it's a concern for athletics, it's, uh, I have, I haven't heard that. So, um, uh, but, so, so for me, uh, and this is sort of how, how I would operate is, if this is a concern, then it goes on, on the, on the, on the schedule next fall to be addressed in October, discuss it in November, so that we head into the new year, you know, we're, we're ready to go. So if that's something you wanna see addressed, then I, I would just like your support to address it properly. Uh, and then, uh, we can, everybody can come to the table.
Okay. And again, for, for the purposes of effective communication, I agree that it would be better for our seniors if we had a fixed date for graduation, within all the requirements and parameters of the, of PDE and everything else. You know, if we've gotta, if we've gotta have maybe a one flex day that goes from the seventh to the tenth. You know, if we, if we have five snow days, and we can't make it up, and we've got a slide today, that, that's how we do it, that's fine. But I, I think everybody else can have some flexibility, and we can have more discussion. But I, if you're looking for more voices in terms of what needs fixed, I think the fixed end date for seniors is a community issue. Uh, again, it, not my issue, but it's a community issue.
The only thing I'd ask is, everybody put, if yay, or if it's a yay, a yay, if it's a no, it's a no. Please, that's the, is, graduation is one of the some-called issues with, possibly within the community and such. But when it comes to the snow days, throwing them on to the end of the calendar, it's not just a, who cares, we would just throw them on the end of the calendar. You're also talking about with the, how the PSSAs, how the keystones, how the testing for the APs. All of those days are lost when you throw it just at the end, because there is no instruction to catch up. You start, whenever you start, you miss fi, four snow days, and bam, you miss four AP days. And they don't change the task, they don't turn around and say, hey, it's not gonna be on May first now, it's gonna be on May fifth, so you can catch up. That's why, one of the other reasons why I've been asking also to consider moving the snow days into the calendar. I understand there is obviously a lot of cons, and people are planning vacations, teachers have scheduled off days, and everybody likes to play it. That's why I was asking for, and like you said, if the board as a five, or six, seven, eight, nine, believes that that is something that is beneficial, they'll look at it, it's still just me and a graduation date. Then there's, that's fine, we can do it that way. It's up to you guys.
I think it should be looked into as well, too, 'cause you're a good point about the AP exams and the thing else, if we just add it to the end, they're not having that extra time to make it up unless the teacher, which we've had teachers do that, you know, do the special courses on the weekends and such. But, yeah, I would rather see it, see if there's some way we can move it into the schedule. And, you know, maybe also talk to the students in PTAs, get some of their feedback as well. That, I mean, when you talk, that would be a culture change.
Yeah.
Just, that, that would be, that'd be, that would be a community culture change when, you know, you, you, you go into December for any snow days, then the first day that you're, you're, you're gonna give up is this day. And then, and then, uh, the second time, if the snow days happen in January, you're giving up this day. And then if it happens in February, you're giving up this day. So you would, you would have to, we would have to work on that, you know, ahead of time, so that everybody knows those particular things. Because, you know, there are making, people do go on spring break, people do go on winter break. They use the president's holiday for long weekends. Uh, and then, of course, um, you know, I'd wanna work with Dr. Harney as far as what are the contr, you know, contractually, as far as those pieces go, how that, how that works with the, with the teachers, and, and our, all of our collective bargains, our teamsters, et cetera, so. And this might also be a good opportunity for the community relations officer to, to start working on that as well, so.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say, I am, I, I'm in support of, of the proposal to revisit the calendar and work on it for next year. I know Al was trying to get us to, you know, let's, let's all say how we feel about it, should we give direction, to the administration to revisit it. And then I, um, I know I just mentioned graduation for this year. And it was sort of said, are, you know, we can put it in stone or not. So I just wanted to try to get, I mean, if that's something you can come back to us with, or, you know, if you can't say it tonight, that's fine. But I just know a lot of people are waiting, and would very much like to know, if at all possible.
We can look, we can do a little work for next, for this year. And, um, uh, we just need to decide on what you wanna do next year.
When do you need us to start bringing this up again, to revisit next year's calendar? You said you need more of a heads-up, when do you need that?
Yeah, no, you would just, uh, if, if this is, if this is something that you want, you want to visit, then we'll start this process in October. Yeah, we'll, we'll just, we'll just put it on our, the calendar, to start to review it.
Put it on calendar.
Yeah, it'll be on a calendar, yeah. No pun intended.
Yeah, it's been decades, and I've been in that disaster for close to twenty years. But I can just be, just speak for myself. I needed to know when my daughter graduated, when my son graduated. All of our relatives live nearby. We had friends who had relatives coming in from all over the country for graduation. So they needed a precise date for very reasonable and logical expla, uh, reasons. And it, it shouldn't be something that you have to ask people about. You know, uh, you know, you've got kids coming in for high school graduations, kids coming in from college graduations. The airports of graduation are filled with relatives coming for, to see a graduation, and those airplane tickets had to be purchased in advance. So it's nice to make that date as precise as possible.
One old guy's opinion about what happened.
So I think every year, we do have this conversation for, at, at the four years that I've been here. And we always hear reasons why it might not work this way, or it might not work this way. Here's the, here's the obstacles, let's just say, and I think we're all saying it here. Approve this calendar as is today. Set, uh, plan to set June seventh, two thousand nineteen, as graduation date for the class of two, two thousand nineteen. We need to figure out a way to make that happen. And then going forward, as we start to plan the calendar for nineteen twenty, we need to figure out if there's better practices than what we're, than what we've been doing. And if that does mean a culture change, or how, how does it affect us contractually with our collective bargaining, bargaining agreements we have in place? All those things, we have time, if you're hearing it from the board now, that we think those things need to be looked into, then we can see what we can do better, starting with initial planning in October next year, whenever it is you start. So could we give that direction tonight, and approve this calendar as is, and make the improvements, uh, moving forward? That, I agree with Al, they've been suggested every year that I've been here. Here to hear them, whether, whether it's been Al or somebody else, and we all kinda nod our heads like, that sounds good, but there's obstacles. And then we forget about it, and then we come up to this date, and that's when we bring it up again. So, yes, we, if we can all agree. Okay, great.
We're setting June seventh, we should... June seventh of nineteen, and June eighth of eighteen. And then we're making four for one, two for the other. Is that, is that, are we okay with that?
How do you catch the date for this year?
That's where we're at right now.
But Dr. Shirk said he wanted to look into it and get back to us, 'cause...
For eighteen.
So how could we set it for him today?
But we can change our money, they go to work. If it doesn't work. I have thought, I have found that, you know, take a look, they are well motivated, find that it does or doesn't work, and get back to us soon.
Gives us a jump, gives the families a jump two weeks, then wait till, what is that, February, or March, whatever our next people is.
It's two, it'll be March.
Be March.
It's usually March when we know there's not gonna be any more snow days.
Right.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the eighteen-nineteen calendar. Do we wanna amend that motion to say, approve the eighteen-nineteen calendar with a graduation date of June seventh for the class of two thousand nineteen? Motion and a second. Any other questions or comments?
Just to be clear, are we including June eighth, twenty eighteen, as a date for graduation? We are not.
Not in this motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Okay.
Then can I go right off with Bob? Do we have to make a motion for June eighth, or can we just say, tentatively scheduled for June eighth, bearing, uh,
Pending confirmation.
Pending confirmation from the, the administration?
Yeah, without a motion.
Without a motion, just...
But we're gonna wait for more information.
That's good.
You thought that was good?
No, I didn't, actually I didn't. Uh, moving on to, uh, twelve-two, conference attendance.
I'd like to make a motion under action, action items, education, twelve-two, conference attendance, twelve-three, conference attendance. And twelve-four, I'm sorry, missed that one.
So motion to combine twelve-two through twelve-four, which is two conference attendants, and approval for a mentor teacher. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Um, you want to the joint operating committee, can you update?
Actually, for this, I would ask that if we could put this on the agenda for February twenty-seventh. 27th, and I'll come back with a complete report.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, Policy Committee.
Mr. Parker? Yes, thank you. We reviewed several policies. I'll try to keep these straight and in order. Currently, we have a policy 248 anti-discrimination and harassment, and policy 103 non-discrimination in school and classroom practices. It was recommended that we combine those policies, creating a new 103 and rescinding, the rescinding of 248. We reviewed these close, and basically it was, where this came from was a recommendation from PSBA. So we looked at this, and the only change we've recommended was something that was left out from the previous policy in regards to adding a comment regarding false reporting. Then we've looked at similar policies, 104, which is non-discrimination in employment practices, and 348 anti-discrimination and harassment. So same as the, the first ones I discussed, combining these into a new 104 and rescinding 348. They're the same policies, ones regarding classroom, ones regarding personnel. Any questions on those? I was just going with PSBA's recommendations and some legalese. All right, then we had, we looked at policy 150, we needed to add that, let me just pull In rescinding the previous policies I discussed, it would have taken out something that we needed in for Title I comparability of services. So hence, the request to create a new policy for that, which would be new policy 150 titled, Title I comparability of services, which is just saying, you know, we're not gonna discriminate between schools, the funding will be, services will be shared, et cetera. All right, then we looked at revising and adding things to policy 103.1. Okay, 103.1 was regarding 504 eligibility, and there was just some added wording, again, in regards to harassment and discrimination. So it didn't change anything we currently do, it just kind of clarified some things for legal reasons, making things more clear in that regard. Then we looked at policy number 819, which is suicide awareness, prevention and response. Again, this was, this came from, I believe, Ms. Pacito's department, and it was quite reworded, just to kind of follow current, policy current procedure, how things are coming out via PSBA. So nothing significantly different, just how they reworded things to give some clarification. That's the policies we looked at. Those went up for 30-day review the day after our policy meeting, so in two weeks we'll be looking for approval for those. Upcoming policies to be looking at, we're gonna be looking at the policy regarding committees just to match it to what we're doing now, the wellness policy, policy looking at allergies, and also reductions of staff, policy based on, not that we're reducing staff, but the, revising the current policy to follow some changes in the law with that. Any questions regarding policies? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Moving on to new business, Mr. Alexander. Does anybody have any new business to discuss at this time?
Okay, you're up.
Great. I, I wanted to share, share with the board an opportunity I have this coming weekend. At the end of January, I was asked by the ECR group, Dr. Bill Adams, who's the regional president, to present with ECR at the National Superintendent's Conference in Nashville this, this weekend. And I was planning, the, the board had proved, I was planning on going, but this was, this was an added honor, I guess you could say, that they are looking at Potch Grove as one of their groups of schools that they have, they do an exceptional job with student data, and how we have transformed our, our data into information for, for our, for our students and for our students and for our families. So I'm gonna present basically the Potch Grove model, if you will, on how we use our assessment package and how we filter that down, if you will, to our building administrators, teachers, then ultimately our, our students. So I just wanted to share that, I thought it was, you know, quite an honor, I'm really humbled to have it done, and I'm really proud to represent Potch Grove at, at a national conference to basically share, you know, our practice and how we use assessments to, to help our, our kids and our students and families. The, the conference, the, the title of this, of the, the ECR group is Data Rich, Information Poor, No More. And I just wanted to share that with you, and there'll be another superintendent from Washington Township, Joe Ballendarf, he'll be presenting from the, you know, using Jersey, but I thought it was nice that, that, you know, when, when you're at the national level, they thought of us and what we're doing and working with us, with Gina Simonak over the last two years, and asking us to, to help present. So I wanted to just, you know, thank you for the opportunity for going, and I'm looking forward to, to representing Potch Grove this weekend. Thanks, Dr. Shirk. Anybody else on new business? Okay, on to answers to previous questions. Any, any comments from the board regarding that inquiry? Okay, we'll move on to our, our second opportunity for public comment. Do we have anybody wishing to make public comment at this time? Okay, then we will adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight.